This proposal for the 2017 grant is a little different than the 2015. In 2015, we also asked for $24,000 for an air compressor. Our current air compressor will not fill the new bowels. They are under a higher pressure, so we would need a new air compressor for this. Andrew Charmsström, a member of the Fire Department, his place of employment, RDO Equipment, provided a grant this year. Andrew submitted a grant and was awarded $16,000 towards the purchase of that compressor.
Nice. So that new compressor will work on both bottles?
Yes.
So, okay. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion that we allow the Fire Department to apply for the grant.
I'll second.
Okay, I got a motion by Sean Ryan, second by Maggie Bass. If there's no other questions or concerns, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passed at 4-0. Good luck.
Greg, since you have the TV camera, you've got a ham and egg breakfast coming up and a chicken barbecue.
Sunday, January 28th, Fireman's Breakfast, K.C. Hall, 7:30 a.m. until 12:00 p.m., I think.
And how about the chicken dinner a week later, or two weeks, or what?
The date of the chicken dinner, I believe, is Friday night, February 9th.
Friday, February 9th for the chicken dinner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Generally, we charge it to a private.
Next on the agenda, the esteemed President of the Gulf Board, Tom Mock, is here to discuss the contract is in place, it's just the fee, Mike, is that?
No, but last year was a one-year contract, so...
Oh, was it a one-year contract? I thought we did a two-year. I thought we did a two-year contract with...was it just one year? Okay.
Yeah, it was 2017.
My fault.
That's what happens when you get to be my age, man.
Yeah, well, I'm older than you, so...
Well, I wasn't gonna say that.
Just think how scary it is when you get my age. And David looks at you.
Yeah.
Does it improve?
No.
Okay, so I think everyone knows the premise of this agenda item. Basically, we need to approve this contract, and it came under consideration at the Gulf Board at our November meeting. And we had, obviously, frank discussion on the performance of GME, and I guess in summation, the Board felt that GME provides very good value to the city with regards to their management of the golf course. We did have tougher than 2017. There were quite a few things that led us down that path, but the Board does feel that GME is the management company we want to proceed with. So with that said, they voted, the Board voted 4 to 0, I believe, to move forward with the amended 2018 GME contract. And basically, the only slight change was basically cost of living, 2% increase for the base contract, and the bonus structure was cut in half. The 2017 had a $5,000 in compensation bonus eligibility, and Wade and GME decided to change that and put, or have that number to 2,500 for 2018. So basically, the end result, as far as the final number, that could be compensation that GME could see, would not change. And that is about it, I believe, that there were no other fundamental changes with the contract. And again, the Gulf Board recommended to approve and move forward with the contract.
Anyone have any questions? I guess I just want to reiterate that at the Board meeting, I did abstain from the vote of that night because I didn't want to influence any other decision. I wanted to make my vote tonight. But I kind of agree with Tom in regards to the value that GME has brought to the golf course. And, but that's really what I would like to add. Any questions?
How many people, employees, do you list that GME have?
Two.
Two.
Plus you.
You can't count yourself, right?
That big check you get every month.
That's the one.
Amy, that's on page two of the contract, under section five.
And I guess it should be said, this would be another one-year contract, as I'm reading this, and we'd be looking at this, obviously, again closely at the end of this year.
Tom, was it approved? How did the vote go? I know the mayor abstained, but...
Sure. It was a 4 to 0 vote, and all the Gulf Board members were very much in favor. Obviously, there's room for improvement and things that hopefully will shake out a little differently in 2018, specifically weather-related. A lot of the number changes from 2016 to 2017 were due to lost days with the weather, which are obviously out of the hands of GME. You know, there were definitely things we're gonna try to tighten up with the budget as far as looking at where we're at and how we can make adjustments through the year. But again, you know, the bottom-line discussion at the end of the day for the two employees they provide and the work Wade does, we really don't see the city getting that, you know, management structure at a better value anywhere else. So the Board, very much positive on what GME provides and that value, so it was a full recommendation with no one voting against.
How many years has it been, though, Wade?
It started in 2011.
Eleven, right, okay.
Is there any other management company that's brought into the fold, just to provide a comparison?
Sure, and possibly Wade or Mike can talk a little more on this, but I know we did look at that just for rough numbers a year or two ago. And correct me if I'm wrong, but the numbers, I believe, we saw were almost double the amount of fee that is provided for GME, about double to provide to an outside firm, the national-type firms that manage many, many tens or hundreds of courses for the same type of services. So, you know, a much higher cost is the bottom line, as far as I know, the research that was done.
Thank you.
Did the Board discuss if we had brought that person internally and made them a city employee? Did you guys weigh that?
We had, no, we did not. We have not. I mean, we have the historical numbers from, you know, the years prior to GME coming on board. I think that's the picture that we're evaluating at this point, but possibly moving forward, you know, it may be worth the city putting numbers to and doing that evaluation, but that was not done in November. So, but obviously, we would have to factor in the full-time management position that, you know, of the course, course operations that GME and Kurt provide, really, and then also, obviously, Christie and her food and beverage hours. So, you know, we would have to take both of those positions into account as full-time positions and put numbers to it.
Right. Well, the only reason I say that is because now the contract's getting up to where we were, or actually, we've exceeded where we had that position in-house over the last six years, on this kind of...
Sure. And, no, and I think we realize that...
I'm happy with GME. I think they do a wonderful job, but...
But we realize that...
There used to be a definite cost savings there, and that's why we went with them at first, and now in the last six years, it's caught up and maybe even exceeded.
Right. But we also are getting that additional food and beverage position that obviously Ken Norland tried to, you know, stretch and do both positions, but we feel we're getting more out of two people for almost a similar type dollar expenditure, I guess, at this point, was the, you know... That was the roundabout discussion. We by no means had Michael, Mike run numbers or do any hard analysis of those positions, but possibly it may be time to do that.
I would take it would. I mean, I, you know, Ken did it with part-time help. I know that obviously Christie's full-time, but food and beverage was down last year. You can equate that somewhat to the rounds played, but maybe some other economic reasons, but I'm just curious if the Board is looking at both alternatives to get the...
Yeah, at the present time, no. You know, at the present time, we've approved the, you know, the idea of moving forward with GME for 2018, but obviously, it's a one-year contract, so that's definitely an item we could look at over the course of the next year and see what those numbers shake out to be, and if, you know, just from a management standpoint, that would be the right move. There's other issues. Full-time position in the summer, you know, we need people that are there in those positions more than 40 hours a week, and I know that was an issue with full-time positions of that nature for those four, you know, golf season months. So I don't know how that could be addressed with a permanent city employee again, but we could sure to go down that path and start looking at those things.
That was it. I'll send those questions. I'll make a motion to recommend the GME agreement for 2018.
I'll second. Second motion by Dave Bruzich, second by Sean Ryan. Any other questions?
I just don't feel that I have enough information with those evaluations we talked about.
Well, that part of the process was whether there would be additional compensation above and beyond the base rate. I think that I provided a memo to you that in my discussions with GME, and as we look at that, and I don't have the file 2017, December numbers in, those are becoming available about the third week, when we get ready to take them to the Board meeting, is that in our discussions, and as we've gone through the evaluation, is it's not likely that I would have recommended any part of that $5,000 coming in as additional compensation on top of the base rate that was paid for 2017. And I think the consensus between Wade and I is that's where we were at. So you wouldn't see that, that the base performance was there sufficiently, that the Board felt that they wanted to move forward for this next year, but there was no bonus to be paid in 2017. So I think that's indicative of, as you look at that, is that the comparison, as Tom has addressed there, when you took a look at what our former full-time golf professional was in benefits, and then you start to add in some part-time positions, and that is that, you know, this contract, as we say, we're going into the eighth year, is that, you know, had that increased, with any colas on that base rate as a city employee with the same benefits and that, that likely would have been collectively at or above where we're at right now in this contract with GME, I would guess. Now, I don't have that calculated every year, looking at the cola on that full-time employee, but assuming he was doing a reasonable, good job, and he had good performance evaluations, he would have been eligible for those colas on top of what his base rate was back in 2010 and 2011, along with the full package of insurances that would provide full-time city employees. And so when you collectively look at this rate that's in the contract for 2018, is that I don't believe that I'd be too far off base that if those handbill percentages that have occurred, is that likely that cost would exceed what we're looking at here tonight.
It'd be nice to have that number, if you could figure that out.
Yeah, but it's only speculative in doing that, and I can certainly provide that, as if nothing had changed and that position had continued the way that it was...
Because he would have reached the maximum number of steps by this point.
Yes.
So he wouldn't be getting just a step raise.
But when we did the complete reevaluations of all the job descriptions, that was one that we did not do.
That's right, so it might not even be a level 11, whatever it was.
But for your point of comparison and discussion, assuming what was there, had it continued, had he stayed in that position, we can speculate and show you what that likely would have been. And that's what I'm saying, is that without hesitation, with the rate that you're seeing in front of you, is that, as Tommy indicated, we're probably very competitive in that situation. Now, can I say, going out and taking a look at all the other public golf courses out there, and it's not easy to try to go get an apples-to-apples comparison when we start to do this, because it depends on what public courses, you know, have all the food operations. Are they open-air round? Are they not? You know, that information can be gleaned or looked at, but it would take an extensive survey to try to procure that to give us a much better idea. It would take some period of time to do.
And I think I do recall that Patty did produce that last year, and I think it was around the $130,000 number.
Well, I'm just, so I was correct in saying that we're getting really close to that. We used to recoup a lot of savings, and now within six years, we're right back to the same step we're at.
Well, we're in your area.
Instead of losing 167, we lost 205. I think 167 was kind of the standard that the city threw in with, wasn't it, over the years?
$227,000 approximately towards principal interest on equipment at the golf course.
So, okay. Well, I'd just like to go, as they move forward, to maybe have some close comparison to see that...
Certainly ask that up, though.
I think I just did, to Tom, I mean, it was a suggestion that I threw out there, that the Board look at that.
Yeah, I think we have to include, you know, it's not just the one position. We have two positions that, and their roles, who we would need to fill with, you know, full-time or part-time slash full-time positions paid by the city. So it will take some due diligence, and obviously, we'll have to work with Mike on that, but I can truly task the Board with that effort, so...
Okay. Well, I know that part-time labor's gone up over the past few years, and then we've added a full-time position, but yet food and beverage is down, so maybe that isn't a full-time position. I don't know what the day-to-day is. That's, you guys understand that more than I do.
Sure.
But I think it's a fair question to ask, if you guys are comparing the two, so the city can get the best value for their commitment.
Sure.
The numbers you're looking at here do not reflect the transfer of that $127,000 in your...
Yeah.
You keep that in mind and wait until you get to see the actual year-end numbers.
Right, you're right.
And I think it's just 120.
I couldn't remember the exact number.
120, I believe.
Yeah, transfer's 120,000, but that's fine. Mike, you're showing your age. You're catching up to me, I'll wait here for you.
So my issue, I guess, is, cut and dry, is I see the value GME provides, because to the taxpayers, it's valuable. But my question, I guess, the problem I have is then addressing the residents that call me with issues on the performance. So if you guys could work for that, and hopefully, these evaluations are helping, so everyone knows what the expectations are. Are they helping?
I guess I would just ask, are the comments you are getting from residents being...
I bring up the City Hall.
Okay, that's all I would ask. I know, we specifically don't get comments as a Board stating these were brought to the City Council, so I haven't seen anything like that, so I guess at this point, I wouldn't be able to comment on what comments you're getting, but I'm hoping that's going to you, to Mike, to Wade.
And that is correct. The processes have been dealt with and looked at with GME every time I have received any of those.
Okay. So without seeing the evaluations, is it getting better?
We make progress and a few steps forward, and then sometimes we take a step back, and, you know, as you take a look at it, if I vehemently disagreed that they were not performing, I wouldn't have basically concurred with kind of what's coming from the Gulf Board. That's why you're also not seeing the award likely until the final evaluation is done for the year. You're not likely going to see, based on the discussions that Wade and I have had, looking at financial and all the other issues relative to their performance under there, that likely they would not be recommended for awards for 2017. And that doesn't mean that they're not doing a reasonably good job, to the point that they're also not recommending that the contract not be approved or that it be terminated. So we're not at that stage. And we do have, in our monthly meetings, we do have discussion on all of the fronts related to financial, to, you know, communication, to dealing with the public, to interaction with the Board, and, you know, all those major elements that are contained in the attached exhibit to the agreement. But they did perform to the level that would have enabled them to receive that award here, so...
Any other questions?
I hope that answers the question.
It does, I'm just trying to, because I know I won't get questions on it, so if I can have an answer for those citizens, using the taxpayer dollar wisely, you know, what's the cost of the customer service?
Well, the issue is, you take a look at the operations, that all of the facets of the operation of the budget are handled through all of the golf fees and income that comes in through food and beverage and all those elements. As I say, that the city's contribution of $121,000, I might have to go back to the budget to get the exact number, is applied towards addressing the equipment and interest on that equipment, that we're not in the competition, the tight competition that we're in with all of the surrounding golf courses, as we had extremely difficult, and as the councils have addressed this issue in the past, is that you've got two choices. Either you can provide that and apply that towards the purchase of equipment that does the replacement, enables us to have a top-notch, well-groomed golf course, or if you choose not to, the operations itself will not produce the revenues to handle that equipment replacement. So if you view that contribution as something that provides, even though all of the fees and expenses aren't addressed by the golf revenues, if you view that contribution, knowing what it's going towards, as something that you're providing a recreational opportunity for residents of the community, and understandably, not everyone partakes in that event, but it's like providing the range of services from parks and the interaction with the school and the swimming pool and other elements, as to what provides various innovative amenities as to why somebody wants to live and work in a community our size. And that's just part of that recreational aspect of it. And to date, the Council has viewed that contribution towards that as a viable budgetary expense. I don't know what more I can say in that realm.
Within reason.
Yeah, that it's been fixed ever since that fee was first implemented, and you've seen the debt service and what that goes towards, so it's not that it's just being spent willingly, that it's a pretty focused contribution in what it does, because it is an extremely tight market out there, and if it was not done, we would not be able to replace the equipment to the degree that we have in recent years.
Wade, is this the first year cash flow-wise it was negative versus, wasn't the last three or four years we were positive?
I think we've had one other year, and I don't know if it was 13 or 14 where we had...
A really wet spring or something, wasn't it?
A wet spring, and I think we were in the negative 15,000 to 18,000 range in terms of cash flow in the operation. So, yeah, this would be year two.
We had two bad months this year. Both May and August were bad rain-wise, and I think that's reflected in, you know, the green fees and rounds played in that. It is unfortunately that we are providing a recreational amenity that is controlled by outside forces that affect what we're capable of doing.
Yeah, I guess just to illustrate the tough year we had in the page, item D of your package, we had almost 6,300 less golf rounds played in 2017 versus '16, and we had almost 3,000 less green fee rounds played in 2017. So the, you know, the environment regarding weather and what we were up against from a revenue standpoint was challenging.
And total, excuse me, total rounds, no, by about 6,000 rounds.
Total runs, yeah, 6,375, to be exact.
And there's no question that affects food and beverage as well.
And another thing is, Dan Gardner's on the Board, and he plays on the Wednesday League, which is pretty much, I would, he's thought about 90% green fee players, and they had five rain outs during the year, which is very high. And, you know, there's a lot of variables that went the, not the right way this year, but knock on wood, I guess it's like being a farmer. So, okay, any other questions? I have a motion by Dave Bruzich, second by Sean Ryan, to approve the one-year contract with GME. If there's no other questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Nay.
Okay, passed at 4-1.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ken, your show.
All right, so I just have some updates for you. I don't know if the projector's gonna cooperate or not tonight here, but first set of data that I have for you tonight would be our permit statistics for 2017. That'll load up, I'll show some graphs for everybody here, but we had a very busy year for permits in the City of Craig. Single-family construction's kind of been our watermark, I guess, for the past years of how things are going, and we have 56 new single-family homes in 2017. That was up 23 from the previous year. The benefit of trying to use that is hopefully for the residents and home that might be watching this, that... So here's a graph of the permits for the single-family homes, so plus 23 there. Moving along on the value, we're up about $4 million on the value of the single-family homes. About $10 million in value for the year, so very positive on our tax base. Here's kind of 2002 to 2017. You can see where the economy kind of collapsed in 2006, 2007, and then...
Hey, Mike, just a question, on the value of the homes going up $4 million, when does that actually hit the tax bill? These are new construction.
When you take a look at how that ties out, is that the assessor's office picks up all of the new construction as of September, at the end of September last year, beginning October 1 of 2017. Through, excuse me, if you go back the previous years to what will be coming in 2018, as we go to do our budget for 2019, and as if you're a member, we're about 18 months behind in the process. And so it will be October 1 of '16 through September 30 of 2017, picked up at 18 for payable 2019. So there's that bit of lag. So in that, we're still looking at the last quarter of 2016 and the first, second, and third quarter of 2017, which is just about at the end of most of, some of, but you will have some that's still in partial construction that doesn't get picked up. But they will pick everything up through September 30 of '17 that they'll look at here in 2018 for payable 2019.
Okay, thank you.
So the average value on the single-family home construction did go up from 2016 to 2017, about $5,500, $5,600 per home, so the average... 2017, about fifty-five hundred, fifty-six hundred dollars per home. So the average value of those homes is one hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars. So that's just on the single-family homes detached ones. So that was a positive sign that we're bringing the new construction average value up.
Where did that put us in relation to the other cities in the county to that?
You know, I haven't seen the numbers as it relates to that. Sometimes we have, some of the other cities do a survey of that and I'm able to compare, but I've not received that information yet.
So Scott County does put that up?
Uh, no, some of the cities put that together on their own, and I just enable that team.
Oh, so you compiled that list?
I did not, no.
Because I know I've seen it before, where it shows...
Yeah, City of Lonsdale used to do it for a lot of the cities in the area, and other cities have done it before, but nobody took the initiative, I believe, to do that this year. So I am curious myself about that as compared. Not just permit number-wise, but value and all that. So when I did that, I'll share it with you.
We will get a report later this year as we begin to look at 2019 budget preparations, is we do get information from the county assessor's office that will tell us what our estimated new taxable valuation is and what the new value of construction was. And you can look at that region every city, but there's not a report that is simple and easy to look at, because one would have to go into every single city report and try to extract out what their new construction was to give you the answer that I think you're looking for. Either it has to be done by total, this is single-family, you could have multi-family, for total units is total residential equivalent units, or you can look at what the value of new construction is that the county picks up. So there's a number of different variables, but it's not put together in an easy handout report, unfortunately.
You know, now that I think I see that in the Star Tribune, Star Tribune really prints that, when various issues come up. And they might be the ones that are compiling it, so...
But as Ken says, it's typically, if you want to do it, you have to kind of take on that exercise, because it can be a lot of work trying to get that aggregated information from, it exists, you just have to be able to put it together in a report format.
Yeah, I don't think I'll have the time to do it, but if one of the other cities compiles it, I will certainly share it.
Okay. And if I see it in the Star Tribune again, I'll give it to you.
Yeah, if they call me and are surveying, I'll find out when they publish that as well. All right, so again, you can see the single-family home permits. We had some very good years in nearly 2000s, the economy was solid in 2006, 2007. We kind of languished a bit for a few years there. Been on a rebound, not, I'm not calling it a trend, I guess, yet at this point, but we have seen positive gains in our single-family home numbers.
It's a number of trends.
It's a number, exactly. So kind of the number that I think is a little bit more telling would be the number of housing units that we've seen in the city. So for a number of years, actually for over ten years up to the year 2016, we had no new home construction other than the single-family homes. So we finally broke that drought in 2016, and we had twenty townhome units constructed. Majority of those were attached, six-unit-plus buildings, and then a couple of, or one unit of twin homes. That continued into 2017, twenty-eight multi-family townhome units being constructed, and then the ninety-one units for senior housing that were under construction at this point at the tail end of 2017. So that's where we see our housing numbers jump up again to one hundred and seventy-five for the total units for the year. And again, you can compare that going back to 2002, the housing unit numbers. And some of this spike is attributed to construction of Phillips Square and Maulestrana in some of these earlier years, and again, the townhome construction and that dwindled to the single-family only for, again, about a ten-year time period from 2006 to 2016. So again, the upward trend is seen. Ken, if you hold right there, that Ken did acknowledge it, but he and the building department staff that had dealt with all this construction, if you take a look at this graph, what it tells you is that on paper, this was the second busiest year in the city's history as it relates to the total number of housing units that were approved for construction. So that's a measurable statistic that tells you, and obviously ninety-one of those units is our senior housing project that is getting started and underway in our construction. But if you add that to the single-family, and the townhome units, and the twin homes, and some of that, and a hundred and seventy-five residential units, that's the second busiest year in the city's history.
Ken, what was built in 2003 to fifty-three hundred and seven?
A lot of those units, we had a lot of single-family homes. We had a lot of the townhome units over on the Horizon Drive neighborhood was included in that total. What we had actually at the end of 2003, what we had occurring, effectively January one of 2004, and that was not with the city at that time, but there was a water and sewer connection fee that was being jumped up from, I think about five hundred or a thousand dollars up to about thirty-five hundred dollars a unit. So you had everybody pushing to get their permits in the door prior to the end of 2003. So it's kind of artificially inflated, but nevertheless, permits were issued for that. So that was a bulk of it. Specifically, the multi-family townhome unit, as I talked before, we had a ten-year drought of those types of units. Twenty units picked up last year, then again, between the multi-family and the senior housing units, hit the hundred and nineteen number, just on those units alone this year. Value, obviously, again, on the multi-family units jumped considerably, where we had about two point seven million last year, upwards of seventeen million this year. And most of that, again, is attributable to senior housing projects. And that value, I think, was upwards of about twelve million dollars, give or take, on the permit valuation. Commercial industrial permits has kind of been a unique area for us in the city. So we had generally been, again, as with every other permit, on a downturn, and we're seeing that upward trend again, not as good of a trend as on the single-family, but again, an upward trend. We had a lot of smaller-scale industrial commercial permits in 2017. Not any huge permit that I can hang or add on. We had a small addition on Scott Equipment, some other renovations and internal alterations was kind of the theme of the year, if I could give any indication of where those projects happened. A lot of things you don't normally just visibly see out in the open is building additions, but they did add value, they did improvements to those properties where they did occur. So that is reflected directly in the value. So again, while we had a lot more commercial industrial permits, the valuation was actually down from a little over two million last year, a little over one point six million in 2017. Now, a category where we did see a pretty good uptick is public permits. These are permits for school additions, hospitals, and similar non-taxable type of projects. So we're up from eight last year to twelve this year. Now, the value on those, these don't directly relate to the tax value, obviously, on a public permit for a non-taxable property, but the work and the value in those did add up quite a bit. We had the new bus garage at the, near the middle school, I should say, and a number of other smaller renovation projects that were delegated and given back to the city. We're obviously collecting permit revenue on those. If you recall, we did not have the inspection and review authority on the CEC additions or the pool, but we have taken over all these other renovations. Falco Ridge Elementary had some pretty major renovations as well. That added up to these totals for the public permits. So a good year for those types of projects. And that's really, really the conclusion of those seventeen growth statistics. So again, I've said it before, so a lot of these permits, we get the revenue this year, we'll be doing a good chunk of the work in 2018 here as those projects are closed out, and we already took in the revenue in 2017. So it does, you can kind of skew the numbers on our revenues and expenditures from year to year, but it was a busy year, and we're starting off 2018 here busy again. And just started getting some of the permits in, actually for a quick trip, building here of the signed permit today, and I think we'll be getting the building permit for a quick trip very shortly as well. So positive signs continuing on for the year. And that kind of, unless you have any other questions on that, it's kind of a good segue into the vacant lot inventory, if you'd like me to continue with that item.
Yep. Unless anyone has any questions?
Thank you.
So one thing we always have done is vacant lot inventory and permit stats together, and it really gives a good picture on land available within the city to build on. One of the important maps that we've been tracking for a number of years, and I can recall, this goes back well over ten years ago, we had over five hundred lots available in the city to build on. We are now down to, as of January one of 2018, a hundred and fifty-two lots within the city you've prepared to build on. And they're basically the yellow lots you've outlined here. The majority of them would be in developments such as Homefield Edition, Raven Stream, Takalski Acres, and then scattering throughout the Prague Estates development. And then there's some other older lots kind of streaming out throughout the town that aren't tied directly to any particular development, but our lots that are remaining, they're still available, may or may not be for sale or active on the market, but our planted lots that could be sold and a permit could be issued at any point, should their owners choose to do that. Based on the single-family home growth, and again, these are single-family lots that would be available for the most part, we've got about a two point seven year supply based on last year's single-family home permits that were issued. Now, part of what goes into that is we had a number of townhome lots that were developed and have similar rezonations and different actions that have taken place, that have taken some single-family homes out of the picture over the years, and then we've added some back. So this simply reflects where we're at today, based on what was planted and what was available on January one. Most of our lots that are available are actually on the Lonsborough County side of the city, in Takalski Acres and the Prague Estates Development, less so on the Scott County side, in the Homefield and Raven Stream and Heritage Estates Development. So a lot of lots that are available out there are not as attractive. Talked with some of the local developers, that walkout lots are becoming harder to find, and I do believe we'll have some developers back in front of the city probably sooner than later for the development of some lots. But as we've talked with what was the contract we had ordered at SEH earlier, actually at last month's meeting, or the last council meeting, was that we have a sanitary sewer study that we have to get completed. That may tell us that we have additional lots that we could open up within the city limits that are already either conceptually planted at one point, or maybe we have to look elsewhere in annex property and develop that way. So we actually plan to interview local developers in association with that sewer study, which we actually had a staff kind of kick out of the meeting for that last week with SEH. And we'll have that done here in 2018. So not in fear of running out of lots here in 2018 by any means, but we are working on addressing that. And that sewer study is a key component to kind of the picture of the lots that you see here Moving on to commercial lots, really not a lot of activity again on this map from last year to this year for the commercial lots we have available. So we have sixteen vacant commercial lots at this point within the city that does not include this kind of an extended area here that some people will remember that Walmart had been looking at back in 2008 for development. We only included the currently zoned strip of commercial land in the acreage total, but if that was added in, that'd be an additional forty acres that could be added to that total. But obviously, we do not have any proposal for any development in that sort of town currently. So fifty-five acres is our current total for commercial land that is available at this time. Moving on to industrial lots, and I should note, all this information will be available on our website. If people want to take a look online, usually we'll get this uploaded shortly after it's presented to the council. So we provide kind of a listing if anybody wanted to get ahold of anybody for a particular lot. We have those coded and keyed with contact and phone number for the owners of the property or the broker if they happen to be on. Industrial lots, we have our eight remaining industrial park lots in the city-owned industrial park. That was out of the nine that we have planted. The only other lot available immediately with utilities is a lot directly north of the fire station, that Randy Kubas owns. We do have a couple of other possibilities to expand the industrial park, which is the mox of property. It's not annexed, but it is adjacent, and it is a property that we've continued to provide to brokers should they be seeking larger development opportunities for industrial parks. So we do have that as well in the mix, but not immediately ready and available for development. So that kind of gives you a picture of what we have available. So again, that sewer study's going to provide a lot of the needed information on the land that we have available for development and where we can move towards developments. And again, that input will be obtained from the developers locally, and either land they own or look to obtain, I'm sure we'll be getting busier back in the planning game here before too long.
Okay, anyone have any questions on that? If not, Ken, I guess you can proceed to the annual commercial building audit.
So I don't have any pretty graphics for this one in particular, but every year, and I should look back when we started doing this, Jim Morris actually began through the EDA functions, doing this annual commercial building audit. I don't know of another city that does it. It's kind of a unique thing that we do here in New Prague, I think. But basically, we take the time to, we actually track it a little better now than we did years ago, but every month I try to keep track of new openings and closings. But myself in the chamber kind of co-work on this every year, where in January, sometimes it slips into February, go out and make an inventory of all the commercial industrial property in the city and see what's moved. Are there any new businesses? Anything's closed? How many vacancies are there? And it is really interesting to look at that from year to year. Sometimes it seems like not a lot has happened, but when you put it on the spreadsheet and kind of tally it up, it provides a good picture. But really, in a nutshell, 2017, or the changes that occurred in 2017, really was pretty consistent two years prior. So we had nine new business openings. This would be brand-new, new New Prague businesses that did not have a commercial location in the city, that maybe were operating out of their basement or out of their home, but didn't have a true commercial presence, whether it be on Main Street or the industrial park. So we had nine of those new businesses in New Prague in our immediate area. And I do know what immediate area, because we go a little bit outside the city a little bit to catch some of the immediate developments, such as the small development directly south of Town on Twenty-Nine there, by the railroad tracks, some of those areas, auto repair and whatnot. So by comparison, in 2017, our report last year, we had ten new business openings, so pretty comparable, one less than last year. Also had twenty-one business closings and/or changes. Now, that sounds bad when you say closings, but a lot of what happened, we did have some closings, but there were a few that simply moved from one location to another or expanded, et cetera. And we had twenty-four of those last year, so a little bit better number, not as many changes, not as many closings as compared to last year. And then finally, we're up very slightly in our vacancies of commercial spaces, and this would be lots and commercial buildings that have vacancies in them. We were up to forty-four. Last year, we had forty-two. So some of the notables, and again, these reports are provided to the EDA and Planning Commission basically monthly, and so always a few that we end up missing in the mix. But Giesenbroyd Beer Company opened in... But Giesenbroyd Beer Company opened in what had been a vacant location for New Prague Appliance. NP Nutrition and Supplements opened in a vacant space on Main Street. We have a tobacco store, not the downtown one, that one is not open yet, but where Fantastic Sam's had closed out in the strip mall near Cobhorns. We had that tobacco store open on January 1. New Prague Senior Living is constructing the 91 unit building near First Bank and Trust, formerly the State Bank. Fashion Nails was a new nail salon that opened in the former TC nail salon on Main Street. So similar business in a location that had one previously, but it had been closed for a while. And then Marine Associates is a CPA firm that opened up on Main Street, not something you maybe outwardly see in your day-to-day movings about in the downtown, but new business in the downtown area. Other changes to note, Hollow Point Firearms closed. They were in storefront down on the west side of town here, Meat Market. The Braus Hotel has new ownership. That was new in 2017, and those current owners still do own the property at this point. To the Point Dance Academy opened a studio location in what was formerly the Trends and Treasures location. So that was a quick turnaround on that vacant property. New Prague Floral has a new owner in the location where they had been operating. Then we had some closings that we still have vacancies at. It'd be Bargain Betty's closed at the very end of 2016. Austin Blossoms closed earlier in the fall in their location on East Main Street. And then some more positives to note, with the demolition of the Econo Foods building, or majority of it, there's still a wall kind of holding the hillside in place there. But there, as I noted, we're starting to get the permits in for the new QuickTrip store. They do plan to start construction on April 31st, just so the council's aware, that's what we've been told.
April 30th.
30th, excuse me, I had an extra day there. April 30th, end of April, I should have just stuck with that. April 30th, and so we should see that activity going on over there. Paul Hansel Homes opened their new location in the industrial park and began operations out of there in 2017. CBS Racing is an operation that we actually visited during our business center retention survey efforts that the EDA has undertaken, and have found out that they have quite the operation in the existing industrial park and existing building, and have expanded. And I have some Mike and I are meeting tomorrow to talk about some more expansion, they're planning for some equipment, so kind of a positive. CBS Racing, if you did not know, if you're not into car or car racing, it may not be of interest to you, but it is to me. But what they do is they provide kind of custom for hot rods and that type of a vehicle. Pulling system for air conditioning systems and running the cooling and heating systems of the cars. And their clients spent a lot of money on that, and they are doing quite well as a business that started out of a home and then has continued to move up the ranks. They actually are the owner of the largest building in the industrial park at this point, and are continuing to expand in that building. So kind of a good success story, and we hope that they continue to grow. And then finally, another new name for the hotel, Quality Inn and Suites, is now the name of what was New Prague Inn and Suites. And if you look back at the last few years, it was a different name every year.
Do they just have Velcro on their sign?
They are actually putting permit signs up, and they do get permits every year for them. So we'll take it for granted. But I think overall, the point to make is, we do have change. We continue to see things fill up relatively quickly, and I think shows that we're still healthy downtown in particular, don't have any gaping holes. Bargain Betty's is a big one at this point, but that happened at the very end of the year. And I do want to note, with the assistance of the First Stop Shop, I actually do use this list, and we are able to connect people that call looking for locations that may not have a listing on the MLS. But with this listing and just local knowledge and who to get ahold of, we can pair people up pretty nicely most of the time, and it's very valuable throughout the year. So it's definitely worthwhile.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Ken? Well, again, Ken, we appreciate this information every year. It's definitely worth, at least in my opinion, worth your hard work in getting it for us because it does show the direction that our community is going in.
Yep, yeah, we can see real quickly if things are going in the wrong direction, so no red flags.
Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Anyone have any questions, any issues or anything on any item in the consent agenda? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Second by Dave Brujic. If there's no other comments, all in favor, say aye. Aye in the opposition? Okay, 5-0. Miscellaneous, Patrick, you got anything?
Nope.
Okay. Rebecca, I'll get to you in a second. Mitch? Ken?
Nope.
Mike?
Just a couple of quick items in your packet is the council update on our downtown highway project, just as FYI to let you know when I spent most of the afternoon in meetings with MINDA and staff on the project. And so we continue with that every other month as we have, and we'll continue through most of this year as well. They are beginning to develop an agreement for the second phase of the process, but it's not quite ready as of yet, but are going through discussions relative to the railroad as far as state working with the railroad to change out the concrete pads in between the rails. And then I think there's parts that's on the others on each side there, but it's trying to get that set up and done with the railroad ahead of the work that'll happen in 2020. And so it's trying to take the conceptual design and the re-layout because there'll be brand-new signals and all of that going over the railroad, so there's extensive work in there. As we take a look at the historical aspect, it's trying to figure out from the design, working with our downtown committee, looking at options and alternatives that at some point will be formally recommended to you, or we're going to continue with a couple more open houses this year before final decisions get made. So a lot of work on that project continues, and I just enjoy our trip to McAdoo to meet with their staff. It's an interesting process. Second part, the mayor had actually brought it to my attention, I hadn't quite read the newspaper on Friday. Mayor, do you want to tout that since you signed the letter?
Well, I'm sure it wasn't my letter that changed it, but I just did notice in the Star Tribune, the deal with the wild rice. I think the court case is what in Grand Rapids, I think.
They had the administrative hearing.
Yeah, I think it was out in northern Minnesota.
They've taken information from all around the state, and I know it's been at a number of different locations. But they issued an order, and the order was that the findings on the proposed wild rice sulfate rule was rejected, was rejected, the proposal by the Minnesota Public or Pollution Control Agency. So all of the work involved with it, we've had in Messer, as it was around, trying to take a look at that. You can read some of the salient features associated with that. But if down the road, that that rule had been rejected, is that it could, again, take a look at how they look at all of the bodies of the water that contain rice, and where does our wastewater treatment plant water flow to, and its impact ultimately on wild rice. Somewhere down the road, it could have meant many, many thousands of dollars and likely millions of dollars in impact to us and our wastewater operating entity. So even though we're quite a ways away from the information, I think what Glenn showed you that a number of months ago, that was first presented, and we asked to have a letter signed by the mayor, is that that process is helpful to provide input into. And it's kind of nice to see that the result was what it was. Because it's all of these kind of things and alternatives that come back, is we have to comply with any changes in any of the regulatory operations of the wastewater plant, is that results in us having to undertake capital improvements to address wastewater treatment, thus affecting residential, commercial, and industrial users of the community. So nice to see that as a result. That's all I have.
Okay. Sean, you have anything?
No.
David? Amy?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. The joint meeting with Scott Conney Planning, did anything come onto that? I was not able to look at the meeting.
Yeah. I guess in a nutshell, the township and county, well, I should say the township attorney had attended the meeting, this is related to the Beaver issue on Alton Avenue there. Township attorney noted that there's a state statute that allows those affected by damages caused by a Beaver Dam to go after the property owner. And really, what it came down to is that that's really probably the best tool for anybody to address Beaver Dams on the private property owner's property. And I think the township and even the city, if it ever floods back in the city again, can certainly take that action through the statute, basically it goes through district court, and then force the property owner to clean up the Beaver Dams rather than not do anything about it. And it was really determined that having an easement for the Beaver problem probably wasn't the best solution because you had such a wide area of water expand out. It would be hard to determine where to put that easement to cover that every particular time, and that if annexed and developed in the city, we would be changing it anyway. So I think everybody was in agreement, basically, that if there's another Beaver issue, the township needs to move quickly with the action per statute to have the Beaver Dam removed. And we did determine the Beaver Dam, Henry, removed. It is not a DNR-protected water for the channel that's coming from the city over to Sand Creek.
Okay. Thank you. Is it Ken?
My only other question is just sort of on Cedar Lake, are we ever going to know that that settles? Are we ever going to work on agreement again?
A new agreement?
A new agreement or not?
There's been a number of changes in players that it may be worth reapproaching them to take a look at that. Is, I have worked with Boltland May and Ken, and we are going to with the adoption of the budget. We're going to take a look at the historical information. We didn't do anything to really change their rates during the period of time that we went through that process. And so if we incorporate what our budget information is, we probably can reexamine what the pro-rata share of the cost of waste treatment should be for the Cedar Lake area sanitary sewer and water district, and see whether there's been any changes in that because we're still living on the fifth year of the five-year agreement that we put forth, going back to cover 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14, and then we went through the arbitration. And so I had that looked at by Boltland May, and we're going to add the new 2018 budget into that, and then bring that back for council review so you can see what that looks like. And then we can convey that message as well as maybe having the discussion, David here or our local member to that. I have not been to any of those meetings recently, but I know there's been a number of players change both at the county level that are there as well as, I think, the balance of that five member, those five numbers.
Great. There's now officially seven members on the board. During the time we're going through all that, there were only five, so now we have seven of the original five. Two are new. There has been no discussion within the board about changing rates or anything like that. Most of the discussions have been about local issues, complaints from some of the members that they want to do something with their property, and can they all be do it or can't they? Different things with the pump assemblies, they're switching to a new vendor, or they have switched. And so it's issues like that, it's been nothing with the city. There's probably some hard feelings on the one or two members of the board, but beyond that, I think that's past, and it's probably time now to look at establishing a new agreement. I think it'll be, especially with the new commissioners on, you know, I think it'll be much more even.
All right, thank you.
Yeah? Anything else?
No.
Maggie?
No.
Okay. Before I ask Rebecca to come up and state her thing, I want to have Ken do a little segue into this, and then we'll have Rebecca come and share her story.
So I just wanted to note, I have spoken to Ms. Rebecca Reiches a number of different times in the past month or so here, and I do want to note, City Attorney Scott Riggs has noted and wants it to be very well-known for the council as well. You can certainly hear what she has to say about her proposal for the Braus Hotel downtown, specific to the moratorium that we have. As you recall, assisted living in the B1 downtown district is part of that moratorium, the interim ordinance that was approved. Planning Commission has been working on those amendments for the past few months. We're at the point where it's looking like we'll probably have, at the Planning Commission level, a public hearing in February. So we are still obviously taking public comment on that specifically. One of the items they addressed at their last meeting was in relation to assisted living being allowed on the main floor of a commercial building, and very specifically, the Planning Commission felt that was not an appropriate place to consider assisted living. So as it's written and been drafted at this point, and at least according to the Planning Commission, that is the language that they're considering as it relates to assisted living in the downtown. Furthering the discussion, let's say a moratorium were to pass, Ms. Reich's application would be for a conditions permit, whether we allow assisted living on the first floor or second floor only. He, Mr. Riggs, our city attorney, advised that we not engage in dialogue or discussion on any specific proposals at this point, due to the fact that, one, we cannot take application for any conditions permit for assisted living in any fashion. If we do get an application, we would have to immediately recommend summary denial, and then there'd be a one-year time period where we could not reconsider that application. And the other reason not to engage in the dialogue about specific requests at this point is in relation itself to the moratorium and the need to look at the bigger picture of downtown in general, not one particular building and one particular use as it relates to that. Obviously, you can think about that, but don't tie the decision solely to that. So that's what I wanted to preface. So Scott Riggs says be very careful with back-and-forth dialogue and discussion on any particular proposals, so.
Okay, thank you. Flora Jares, please introduce yourself.
Save the best for last, right? So thank you for letting me speak tonight, Mayor, City Council members. I am the person who is interested and has put a purchase offer in on the hotel on Main Street, and I promise not to address anything that Ken just said.
Patricia?
The things that I've been working on for the last few months while deciding if I wanted to pursue purchasing the building is what the uses could be maybe, and what does the city maybe need, or what would the city like to see there? And what I've accomplished so far is to get a restaurant that is very interested in coming in, and I've taken that as far as meeting with them three times, as well as US Foods, who used to do a lot of work with John Schumacher and is very familiar with the building. Everybody just says how beautiful it is inside and what a shame it's been to have sit vacant for so long. So one of the goals is to try to work with the current seller to try to get the sale to go through as soon as possible, and try to get the building back open to the public. A little history about myself, I'm a nurse by trade, and... A little history about myself, I'm a nurse by trade, and I've been doing a lot of direct care work for probably 12-plus years. I'm actually a little more interested in reopening the building as a hotel/restaurant. We have somebody who is also interested in maybe opening a little coffee shop or something with that bar area. And then, as you also know, there's a very nice boutique that's currently leasing space there, and I hope that they will stay as well. Outside of that, I really just wanted to come in tonight and introduce myself. I'm sure some rumors have been going around as to what's happening with the building, and just wanted to say hi and how much I look forward to partnering with the City of New Prague and see what we can do with that beautiful building downtown.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would think, and speaking on behalf of the council, is that as a vacant building and knowing the historical lore and the efforts that have been undertaken to remodel that, the council would support any efforts to try to find a good commercial use going forward along the lines that you were talking about, you know, under the current zoning as it exists for that building. You know, to comment specifically on any proposal that wouldn't be outside of that, as Ken indicated, would have to come through the process, but I think generally speaking, be the hotel or any other open business, the council would support efforts to try to fill those vacancies.
The hotel and restaurant are permitted uses.
Yep.
Okay. So if for some reason she's able to meet all of the criteria under the current zoning, then there would be no issues in that respect, and we just have to take a look at that. She would have to make application and work with Ken to take a look at that for the appropriate uses, and if it meets all the criteria, then Ken, you would have to do what?
Basically, at this point, there's some minor building permit issue things to take care of, but other than that, yeah, it's permitted uses, there's really no further approval by the council or Planning Commission. It would be pretty straightforward, just occupancy permit at that time. So, but again, it really depends on what's exactly proposed in the end.
Okay.
The building's in good shape with all the work that's been done. It is beautiful inside. It would be great to get it back open.
Okay. Well, good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck, and thank you for coming forward.
Yes, we're proud.
Pleasure meeting you.
You too.
Anyone have any other comments or anything? Not, I guess, Mike, what do we need to adjourn or go into a special?
No, that would...
I never get this way.
Well, we do it different ways with you, so I can understand that, that in this case is that we are not going to adjourn this meeting and close it out, as you will need to, under item number six, have a motion and a second and an authorization to go into closed session as authorized under the agenda. We're going to the closed session, deductive performance evaluation, return to the open session, you can't take any action in the closed session, take whatever action, if there is any, and then adjourn. Other times, we, not knowing exactly what might happen and the length of the agenda and whatnot, sometimes we close out the regular agenda, and then we have it set up as a special meeting to go into a closed item. So we've handled it differently based on our discussions with the city attorney.
Okay. I guess I'll make a motion to go in closed session.
Second.
Second by Sean Ryan. All in favor of going to closed session? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye in the opposition? Okay.